We call the City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Here.
Eiko Angeli?
Here.
Vining?
Here.
Germani?
Here.
Lamoore?
Is excused.
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. I ask that all please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge allegiance for this meeting.
We are grateful for the great resources of this land and for the freedom which has been its heritage. Inspire our city officials to serve with fairness, humility, and integrity, and to work for the welfare of this community and all who reside here. We ask for guidance and direction as we come together.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item, please.
First item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda, and for item B, approval of payments to vendors, the amount should read 880,269.35.
Thank you. With that, with the consent agenda, looking for a motion regarding consent agenda.
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Felder?
I motion that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, and recommendations carried out.
Support. Motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilman Michael Angeli, that items on the consent agenda be accepted as stated. Clerk, please call the roll.
Whitman?
Here, yes.
Eiko Angeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Lamoore?
Excused.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The next item would be mayor's comments.
So I'm just gonna make a few very short comments, and I think about in reflection of our last two years, all the hard work and really the progress forward that the council has made is significant. And if you've attended meetings or watched some of the past two years, I think they're evident in comparison to what our goals and objectives were in the past two years. I'm not gonna go through a long litany of those. I think the council will be working soon on new goals and objectives, and it's really an opportunity for us to reflect on many of those as we go forward. I want to give my thanks and appreciation to the council members for the work done throughout the past two years, but also, I know they feel the same way, as our, the assistance we've received from the administration, from our city manager, Mr. Pastu, city attorney, Matt Budz, but also all of our department directors and all of the employees, the work that's done in service to the community. And so for me, and of course, and for speaking for the council as well, I want to thank all of them and the residents in here for continued support, but also attendance, not only here today, but in the past two years. So this is a little different meeting because this is closed from the meeting from this year, and then we move into the swearing-in ceremony, which I'll speak to shortly, and also as we have a second agenda. So we'll, I'll speak to those soon. So those are my comments for this evening, and my thanks to all that have been a part of the progress over the past two years. My thanks with that motion. Next is the meeting to adjourn, Senadie, and I think I'd look for a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support. Senadie, right?
Senadie.
Otherwise, we may have you back. So what that basically means is where you close this part of our term for the 2018, 2019, and we will reconvene after this. Clerk, there's a motion, a second, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Yes.
Eiko Angeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
So as I started to explain what we do at this point, the council's, has to be sworn in, just as we were sworn in two years ago. This is when my, our opportunity is to reaffirm our oath to the office on council as mayor, and also our clerk treasurer, Lavoy. So with us this evening, we've, is Judge Michael C. Brown, First District Court Judge. We've asked him to join us and swear all the members of council and the clerk treasurer into office. And following that, we'll then have an opportunity for photographs. And I always say that there's family here, and you want to have a photograph, don't try to take it from the back row, or if you can't see, please step forward. Our communications director, Jody Egan, is here. She'll be taking some of the official photographs for us this evening. Just if you'd not step in front of her, that'd be great. But other than that, please come forward and take photographs of the council, your family members, or as you desire. So at this time, since our meeting has been adjourned, we need to convene the council to the, to our right side, your left, as we prepare to take our oath of office, and we'll continue on.
Judge, thank you very much.
It's a great honor to swear all of you in today. Thank you.
You can make any comments if you wish.
Well, I got to know all of you and worked with you on many things before I was a judge.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. I Robert Clark.
I Robert Clark.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
Honest and efficient administration.
Honest and efficient administration.
The affairs of the city of Monroe.
Affairs of the city of Monroe.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free of partisan distinction or control.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of mayor of the city of Monroe.
The office of mayor of the city of Monroe.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Please raise your right hand. I Paula L. Whitman.
I Paula L. Whitman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United.
Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
Honest and efficient administration.
And honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Of the affairs of.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the off.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the off.
Of the first precinct council seat of the city of.
Precinct council seat.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to.
Please raise your right hand. I John Eiko Angeli.
I John Eiko Angeli.
Solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United.
Constitution of the state of Michigan. Endeavor to secure and maintain.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
Honest and efficient administration.
And honest and efficient administration.
Affairs of the city of Monroe.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction and.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
The second precinct council seat.
Second precinct council seat.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best.
I Kelly M. Vining.
I Kelly M. Vining.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
Honest and efficient administration.
Honest and efficient administration.
Affairs of the city of Monroe.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Third precinct council seat.
The third precinct council seat.
The city of Monroe.
Of the city of Monroe.
According to the best of my.
According to the best of my.
I Michelle Germani.
I Michelle Germani.
Solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will.
Constitution of the state of Michigan. To endeavor to secure and maintain. An honest and efficient administration. Affairs of the city of Monroe. Free from partisan distinction or control. I will faithfully discharge the duties. Office of. Fourth precinct council seat. According to the best of my abilities. Please raise your right hand. I Andrew B. Felder.
I Andrew Bernard Felder.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration.
An honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Office of.
The office of.
The sixth precinct council seat.
The sixth precinct council seat.
Of the city of Monroe.
Of the city of Monroe.
According to the best of my.
According to the best of my ability.
I Michelle J. Lavoy.
I Michelle J. Lavoy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United.
Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
Honest and efficient administration.
Honest and efficient administration.
Affairs of the city of Monroe.
Of the affairs of the city of.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction.
I will faithfully discharge the duties. Office of.
Office of.
Clerk treasurer.
Treasurer.
According to the best of my abilities.
Okay.
So while we're here, and before the, we continue the meeting component, we take some photographs, the official photographs, we ask the council, and the judge joins us first for the photograph of the council. And of course, clerk treasurer will fly with us as well. May I have to stand a little closer and turn a little bit just to make it a little better? Michelle, I'm sorry, Jody, she'll tell us if we're not right, that's for sure.
Okay, we'll be far enough. Almost. Okay, I'm just gonna take a couple of shots really fast. Um, Michelle and Paula are my students. Okay, everybody knows, oh, you're, you stay, Michelle Lavoy. Clerk treasurer Lavoy. A little uncomfortably close, because that's how this lens works. I'm gonna count to three, and then I'm gonna take several pictures, and then we'll give the audience. One, two, three.
Hey, I know there's some other photos I want to take, please do when I ask that. Chief White and Chief Clark, please come forward as well. Do you join us for a photograph? I appreciate that. Are we all fit?
Hi. Okay, ready? One, two, three. Yeah, yeah.
Let's make this.
I'm squeezing a little. Perfect. One, two, three. A little bit closer. Thank you.
Wait, we'll pause, see if there's some other photos before you start. As the judge signs our oath of office, we're gonna take our seats, and then we'll get ready for the start of our next meeting.
Um, they're gonna move the podium off to the side, and that should be, and Jody's gonna do it in a minute. Why am I sure everybody's turned now? Seems like there's. Okay, good. Yes.
Yeah, I, I finally, hopefully, I can, uh, it says, it says it's working, but it's, my thing comes up and says you're not online, so it's not, it's not connecting. I hope I can get it through my phone. I didn't bring my copy.
I can't even get the agenda up on my.
It's not working.
Oh, it came.
Did it come up?
It's starting here. Where's my? Put the wrong. Oh, here's mine. Did I give you mine? Right there. Yes.
Oh, thank you. I moved yours. You can move this photograph. Michelle, you can move that name tag down a little bit. He's just like his father. We're just waiting for a couple of minor, I'll just say, procedural items in the paperwork, and make sure it's all signed, which the judge did, and once the clerk is ready, we'll begin. I know she's putting some final things in order for us. Good? Okay. So this time, call the City Council meeting order for the first meeting of 2020. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman? Eiko Angeli?
Here.
Vining?
Here.
Germani?
Here.
Lamoore?
He's excused.
Felder?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. And I should have made these comments. Well, I won't. So at this point, we're going to have invocation. I'd ask Sister Mary Jane Herb, the president of IHM, Sister in Service, Makkah Heart of Mary, please provide us the invocation and her comments.
Good gracious, God. We gather at the beginning of a new year, a new decade. We pray that you, God of the journey, will guide our steps as we begin this year. In a special way, we pray for the elected city officials, Mayor Clark, members of the council, Paula Whitman, John Eiko Angeli, Kelly Vining, Michelle Germani, Brian Lamoore, Andrew Fielder, and Michelle Lavoy. May their experience in office guide them during this coming term, guide our leaders and each of us so that we can work together to protect the life and property of the citizens of Monroe. Let us dedicate our efforts to protect our citizens through various means. Guide our leaders, God of the journey, so they may uphold the values of integrity, professionalism, pride, competency, accountability, courage, and family. Sustain our leaders as they lead us to exercise our privileges and responsibilities as citizens and residents of the city of Monroe, so that we can all work together to address the challenges and find opportunities for our residents. Strengthen the resolve of our leaders to serve you, so that our fair, fair city may be a blessing in our community. May they lead us to become members of this beloved community, loving our neighbors as ourselves, so that all of us may come more closely to fulfill the promise of our ancestors, seeking liberty and justice for all. All of this, we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. And on behalf of the sisters, servants, the Makkah Heart of Mary, please know of our continued prayerful support. We've had the support of the mayor and the city for so long, in fact, for 175 years. We will celebrate this year. So we're grateful for your continued support and know that we will continue to support you in your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. So as we have our pledge of allegiance, it's a special opportunity for the young Cub Scouts from Den 547 that joined us here today. They're working on their building a better community venture, adventure in Cub scouting today. And I think what a great day to be here, to see the close, but also the start. And as at this point, we're looking for, as before we do the pledge of allegiance, Dan, Nicholas Hay is the den leader, but Jase Hay from the Cub Scouts is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Jase, if you could lead us, please.
The pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, and thank you for being here. Before we begin some of the business agenda, there's some recognition and opportunity for council to make comments related to some, those they wish to recognize or thanks or comments as we lead into this year. I'm gonna start just by some recognition. Of course, again, I want to thank Judge Brown for being here this evening and doing our oath of office. It's always a pleasure to work together. We've done this before, and other activities, but thank you for being here for the swearing-in. And Sister Jane, it's always a pleasure to partner with IHM, and I see Sister Pat Rourke's with you here as well today. We have a great relationship and partnerships, and look forward to what we can continue to do through this next term. I see, I don't know why he's sitting in the back, but representing for the county is here, Major Troy Goodenough from the Monroe County Sheriff's Department. Troy, you can wave. Is from the county representative to be here, and I appreciate your attendance, joining us on this important day for us. I also see that there's a couple former council members that are here this evening. Sue Wetzel, I see, is here. She represented the city and continues to serve on boards and commission. And Councilman, former councilman Bill Sisk, I know he might have just stepped out, but if he is, I'll make sure we say hello when he comes back as well for his continued support. His also service continues on, on board commission as well. And as the council knows, and we all say, we always take the opportunities to look around those that are here and those that are watching. There's opportunities to serve your community without being an elected official and serving on boards and commissions. And if you have an interest that you just have to, it's available online, but also contacting the mayor's office. So with that, we had, kind of go to the council, and as we start, the year is January, so we start at the end with the first precinct. So let me give Councilwoman Whitman the opportunity, if she has any comments as we start this year, any recognitions or family or thoughts.
Yes, I am very proud of the work that we did during the last few years, during our last term, and I'm really looking forward to continuing that work during this term. I know change is in the air for Monroe, and I'm really proud of the work that we have done. I'm also very happy with the dentist that I have, because I broke a tooth off today, and Dr. Johnson was able to fix it, and I want to give him a thank you, thank you, thank you, because he did not freeze my mouth to where that I would have been drooling while I was doing the whole. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Eiko Angeli?
Uh, thank you, your honor. I'd like to wish the council a productive next two years. It's been a pleasure working with everybody. On the previous two years, we accomplished a lot. I'd like to thank the residents for their continued support. I'd like to thank Judge Michael Brown for doing the swearing-in ceremony. Thank you. Thank the IHM sisters for always being present and giving us some spiritual and practical and common sense guidance on some of our issues. And I'd like to thank my family, who has supported me over the last six years on council. It has been a, without their support, it would be tough sometimes because of the amount of time that we put in, the amount of meetings that we go to. of time that we put in, the amount of meetings that we go to. So I want to say thanks to everybody. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vining.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to thank everyone in the building this evening. I'm especially proud to have my three daughters. Raise your hands. Silvana, Khadijah, and Gabrielle in the house with me tonight, and my dear friends who drove all the way from Southfield. Thank you so much. Of course, my right-hand woman, Ms. Pat White, a former city employee, so I know many of you know her and her good works over at the Oaks Shelter. Thank you guys for all you're doing in the community. Again, I just want to thank everyone for coming out. I want to thank all of the staff, the administration. We had quite a few hot topic issues that didn't always sit well with the residents, but we made it through. And I'm really proud of all the accomplishments that we've achieved over the last couple of years. Really excited about seeing the infrastructure work going on over at the Labor Park. The weather's been very forgiving, so we've been able to get the gas lines, the utility poles, and I'm praying that we'll come in under the expected time of completion. Matt, Vince, and everybody, so that we can have the Juneteenth celebration there in June. I know we're looking at April, but we came in under time on the fire station. I think we can do it again. So everybody pray with me. I've been praying about that. And thank you, my dear friend Judge Brown. I didn't know you were swearing us in tonight, so that was exciting to see you here in your new role. And thank you to the sisters for the beautiful prayer and the support. So the council, thank you all. I think we work together really well. We balance each other out really well, and Happy New Year, everybody.
Thank you. Councilwoman Germani.
First of all, I want to thank Bob for being here and for putting up with all the meetings that I have to go to because I'm not home very much. Also, thank you to Judge Brown. Thank you for swearing all of us in. And thank you, sisters, for our first invocation for the year. We're going to have a lot of important decisions to make in the next couple of years that aren't all going to be easy, but I look forward to all the discussion that we're going to have as a council. And with this leadership, I feel confident with all of us. So thank you, everyone.
Councilwoman Lamore is not here this evening. He did get with the clerk's office and was sworn in appropriately to be as a council person for this term. His son was, is in the Customs and Border Patrol and is his graduation time. So important to be with family as it is with the city as well. So that's why he's not here this evening. I thought it was important to wonder why there's a vacancy, but he sends his regards. I know that. Councilwoman Felder.
Thank you, Your Honor. Certainly a thank you to Judge Brown for swearing us all in and to Sister Jane and all the sisters of the IHM for your continued support. Also to City Manager Pastu and all the staff and the chairs and members of our committees and commissions for all the work and time they put in towards the efforts that we've carried out this past term. I'd like to thank my colleagues up here. I think that we've had a great past year, and I look forward to spending the next one with you. Certainly my family, my wife, my children, and my parents and grandparents, without whom I would not be able to step out of the house and away from the kids to spend Monday nights here with you all. And all those in our community that do what they can with what they have to improve the future of this community. I thank you.
Thank you. So I'll just make a couple of comments myself, as we've heard from others. I do want to thank friends and my family, my wife, who was here earlier, Valerie. Actually, my nephew, William, was here, and my great nephew, Christian. He enjoyed the little tour as a four-year-old to run and see the chambers and get photos and have some cake too. So it was great to have family here, and I know others in the council feel the same way as well. So I look at this upcoming term with our council, and I think you've heard it from the council members and the achievements in the past, but we also know that we have to set goals and objectives and make that next standard of what, to make our community a place that we all enjoy and want to reside in, but also make progress and have prosperity. One thing about this council is, I think in my five previous terms, there's always been a changeover on council. And in this term, the entire council was reelected, and I think that's great. I think it's great for one reason is because I think we've had some good discussions, and as Councilwoman Vining said, we may not always agree, but we understand. I think we have a relationship that's built over the two years. I think it's going to be beneficial as how we move forward this year. We do have some difficult discussions and topics to take on, but we don't have to be reintroduced. And I think that that will bode well as we get into our next sessions of gathering, and that relationship does include Clerk Treasurer LeVoy. So I'm going to give her credit and kudos over the past, not just the two years, but since she started, and the progress that's been made in the clerk's office when you talk about not just the record-keeping, but the elections and keeping up to date and making the progress that's necessary. But I think that's a partnership that the council also has with the Clerk Treasurer's office. So I just want to say a personal thanks to Michelle for her efforts, not just the last term, but before that. I won't go much further, but there is one person, and I knew she wouldn't be in the room, but Pat Weaver, the administrative assistant to the manager and the mayor and the council, is the person that keeps things in order as well. And tonight's just an example of what she does in preparation of items when we talk about things that you need, whether it's the council, staff, and more so, the residents. When they call, they get response from her, and she gets them in the right place. So my personal thanks to Pat Weaver, and I want to thank Jody Egan, our communications director, for the photos. I don't see her standing here right now. That's because she's already posting photographs on the city's page. I'm certain of that. So those are my comments for this evening. Clerk Treasurer LeVoy.
I thank you. I just have a few. Thank you, Your Honor, first of all. I've enjoyed working with council and look forward to the continued partnership. I wanted to thank the residents for returning me to this seat. It's an honor and a privilege to be able to take the oath again this evening to serve for another two years. It's 2020. As an election official is going to be challenging, but thank you to my staff who's already been working, we've been working very hard to get prepared, and we will continue to serve you with the elections and all of the other duties that we have to the very best of our abilities. So I just wanted to thank everyone for that. I wanted to thank my family. They're here this evening, and that's a blessing to be able to have them all here together again tonight, and I appreciate that. Looking at my daughter, she's 11, and she's smiling at me because she's like, "Oh, Mom, are you going to cry?" I'm not going to cry. But I look at you, and I realize how much time passes. You were five when I started, and she's 11 now, and she's almost a surly teenager, but not quite. The point is, is that we have a lot of work to do. We've come a long way, and we have a lot more work to do. And when you, when we look at the children and we reference the children in our lives and we look at the children at Oaks, et cetera, they're just, you see how quickly time passes. So I'm glad that we're all here and committed to moving as quickly as and efficient, as efficiently as we can to have all of our plans come to fruition, which is why I read this quote usually every term that I've been fortunate enough to be sworn in. "As we express our gratitude, we must never forget that the highest appreciation is not to utter words, but to live by them." That was spoken by John F. Kennedy, and I think it's just a good reminder that it almost doesn't matter what we say here tonight. It's what we do, starting tonight and in through the coming two years. So I'm proud to be a part of it. And one more, I just wanted to say thank you to the IHMs. I'm a proud Academy girl, and I know you're part of the reason I'm here. So thank you.
So I have a note here. I let people know because this is kind of a unique meeting, not only because it's two parts and we start this year, but the council continues to, and with the administration, Mr. Pastu and others' hard work, we have a full agenda this evening, which is not the norm. And there's public hearings, there's council action, as well as the consent agenda. Well, may that be the last. So I will make this comment because we really appreciate all that are here. We also understand, as we start our business meeting, that there are time commitments that others may have. And so I give the opportunity, if you may depart because of your schedules, and I appreciate everybody being here. We'll take a moment before that if those have to leave. Judge Brown, I want to thank you again for being here this evening. Sister Jane and the IHM, it's just, it's a great partnership. Thank you very much. I know you have committed some time. If there's others, now is probably the time that you would want to depart before we start the business meeting and we put our notes in order. But you're all welcome to stay, of course. And if you're, and you can watch it on Impact as well if you're not here. And I want to thank the Cub Scouts again for leading us in the pledge, and they can catch themselves, not only Impact, but on YouTube. So thank you all. So as we, we'll move on then with the business component. Clerk, next item, please.
I believe we are up to the public hearing section.
Correct.
Item 2631, public hearing on ordinance 19-007. A public hearing to receive and review comments on proposed ordinance 19-007 and ordinance to rezone 1284 North Telegraph Road from C2 and R1A to planned unit development of the code of the city of Monroe.
Thank you. So at this time, I know this is not, you know, this time, I'll open the public hearing. If there's any comments on item 2631, public hearing regarding ordinance 19-007. Any comments from those present here this evening? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 2629, public hearing for Brownfield redevelopment plan for 1284 North Telegraph Road. It is a hearing to receive and review comments, and there are no comments on file in the clerk's office.
Very well. This time, I'll open the public hearing on item 2629, public hearing for Brownfield redevelopment plan for 1284 North Telegraph Road. Any comments from those present here this evening regarding this public hearing? Any comments to be made? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is under council action, item 2626, proposed zoning ordinance 19-007 and ordinance to rezone 1284 North Telegraph Road. Up for its final reading.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu, is there any other final comments? I know we've prepared in the past.
No, Your Honor.
Very well.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that proposed ordinance 19-007 be placed on the floor for adoption.
Motion by Councilwoman Echolangeli, supported by Councilwoman Whitman on item 2627, 2626, my apology, for the proposed zoning ordinance 19-007. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Whitman? Echolangeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Ordinance 19-007, an ordinance to amend Part II, Chapter 720, zoning, Section 720-23, zoning map of the code of the city of Monroe, Michigan, to rezone the property located at 1284 North Telegraph Road, the city of Monroe ordains.
Shall this ordinance pass?
Councilperson Whitman? Echolangeli? Vining? Germani? Felder? Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The next item is item 2630, consideration to adopt Brownfield redevelopment plan for 1284 North Telegraph Road.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that to, we move to adopt the Brownfield redevelopment plan for the former Lazy Boy property located at 1284 North Telegraph Road.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Echolangeli, supported by Councilwoman Germani on item 2630, consideration to adopt the Brownfield redevelopment plan for 1284 North Telegraph Road. Mr. Pastu, are there any other comments from administration on this?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Whitman?
Yes.
Echolangeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Next item, please.
The next item is item 2637, consideration to adopt resolution establishing Telegraph Road corridor improvement authority.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to establish the Telegraph Road corridor improvement authority.
Support.
Motion by Councilwoman Echolangeli, supported by Councilwoman Whitman on item 2637, adopt the resolution establishing the Telegraph Road corridor improvement authority. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Whitman? Echolangeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Next item, please.
The next item is item 2633, consideration to adopt resolution establishing a police station ad hoc committee. Your Honor?
To adopt a resolution to establish a police station ad hoc committee.
It's a motion by Councilwoman Whitman, supported by Councilwoman Germani on item 2633, establishing a resolution to establish the police station ad hoc committee. Mr. Pastu, I think there was some additional information.
Yep. Your Honor, it's very similar to the fire station ad hoc committee. The recommendation was to have yourself as mayor, Clerk Treasurer LeVoy, Police Chief McCormick, Fire Chief Wright, myself, Assistant City Manager Ed Self, City Engineer Patrick Lewis, Communications Director Jody Egan, and Assistant to the City Manager Mark Cochran. I did have two spots available for city council members if you're willing to, are interested in filling the blanks for that. We are looking to evaluate whether to place this on a ballot initiative in November of 2020, but the recommendation needs to come back and be submitted to the council no later than June of this year or so.
So I know that there's a motion and a second, but we probably need to continue the dialogue of council members looking for two that have an interest, but also a time to serve on this committee if there is.
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Vining?
Mr. Pastu, are we going to have any residents involved in the ad hoc committee? Have we considered that?
I think, make sure I got it. The engagement that we had talked about at the last meeting was certainly utilizing some of the information that we have for reaching out to residents regarding what their thoughts would be, certainly using some of the election results, survey instruments to go directly for feedback on elements of this, and also the next item that we have as well.
That's a great point, to make sure the inclusion is there. I think we, as we look back on the discussions on the fire station and that, how we went back to residents with some information, but also track that as we come, comes back to the ad hoc committee. So are there members of council that, at this time, state whether they have an interest to serve or can serve? And if not, we'll have to, we can work on that also by schedules and time of the meetings and things that as well, but it could give the administration, I guess, some direction on how we go forward. We could pass the resolution without that, knowing that we can take those interests along those discussions with the city manager, and you always can feel free to do that as well.
Question.
Yes, Councilwoman?
Do we know what time these meetings will be?
We do not. We had, when we did the fire station, we did them the following morning after a council meeting, I think 9:30, 10 o'clock, something like that. I, you know, but also recognizing everyone's work schedule, I certainly would be open if there was a 4:30, 5 o'clock meeting preceding our meetings here on Monday nights as well to do that as well. So it's not been defined yet what that schedule would be, but.
Councilman Echolangeli.
I'm willing to serve on either committee, whichever committee the, however, the other members, their area of interest. But the one thing that I did want to talk about relative to the police station ad hoc committee is that I think that the charge of the committee, based on the program information, is to consider alternatives relative to operational planning, facility design, financing, and solicit public input, which I'm all about. However, I think the other alternative that needs to be discussed by the ad hoc committee is the relationship that we currently have with the county relative to the Joint Law Enforcement Center. The, I guess, some institutional history that was built in the early 1980s. When it was built as a joint facility, it was one of probably a handful in the state of Michigan, where you had a city and a county sheriff's department in the same facility sharing similar resources, jail, shooting range, and other types of facilities. The one thing that I want the committee to take a look at is even though that the city of Monroe did not physically buy a portion of that building, we did agree with the county to pay the building of the county building authority a lease for our portion of that building. So our residents have paid for that facility, a portion of it, even though we don't own it. We've paid for a portion of it. I think it's appropriate, as part of the task of the police station committee, is to work with the county in terms police station committee is to work with the county in terms of looking at the option of reorganizing or remodeling that facility with the county. It's, was built in the early 80s, so it's 40 years old. I'm sure it needs to be remodeled. I'm sure it needs to be, the interior needs to be reorganized. But the thing that concerns me in today's environment with what is going on and the, the tasks and the trends that police departments now are faced with both domestic and now other types of issues, I think it's appropriate that we have this dialogue with the county relative to, do we stay in the facility jointly or do we build a new facility? But I don't think we can just, as a committee, take a look at just saying we want to build a new facility when the community has already invested in the current facility. And I know that the number of people in that building have changed as budgets have changed, but I think it's only appropriate to take a look at that as part of the task of the committee. So I'm in favor of the committee, but I really think that the, the duties need to look at the existing facility and proposed facility and what the cost benefit of both of those options are for the community and for the county. Okay? So, like I said, I'm more than happy to serve. I served on the fire committee. I thought it was a, a very nice way to work on the project, but I'm also happy to serve on the capital improvements committee and let other council people have an opportunity to, you know, get involved. So that's all I have, Your Honor.
Other comments? I just, I'll follow up. I think there's a lot that I think this committee will have to take into consideration. Some are internal, that's an external, and impacts us internally with the, with the county. And I think there are, you know, what is the use, what is their future use going to be with that? And I think that's part of that discussion. But also internally, and it's an item that will start to address at the next council work session is the discussion on public safety. I think while the ad hoc committee won't be making a decision regarding that, any decisions that council or information that comes in I think is equally important for the, for the ad hoc committee to understand if they're going to be making recommendations or discussions about that, understanding what the makeup of our public safety components are within that I think is, is important as well. So I think there's a lot, I agree with you, Councilman Michelangelo, I think that there's, many things are going to kind of transform and move forward as we have the discussion, but also that we make sure that the ad hoc committee gets that as they start to make recommendations with all the information. I think the outreach is appropriate as well. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So if there's others that have an interest, and I know that might be difficult at this point as we set the time, but if there's, I don't think the resolution has to have the names filled in at this evening, but there is a motion and a second to.
Establish it.
I'm sorry, thank you. I was putting my notes here. Establish the ad hoc committee stated. If there's, oh, Councilman?
I'm interested in, in being on that committee, the ad hoc committee.
Okay. And I think, thank you. There's two that have an interest, but also taking into consideration the other establishment of the ad hoc committee regarding the capital improvements millage and that discussion might, maybe others that have an interest in that too. So we have a couple, then Councilman, I'm sorry, Manager Pastu, if you get others, then we'll have to have a discussion, but otherwise there's two. So there's a motion and a second. Other comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Whitman?
Yes.
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 2635, consideration to adopt resolution establishing capital improvements millage ad hoc committee.
Thank you. I know I took the motion for the, motion in the second before, but maybe if there's outside comments from administration on this or, or the council members, Councilman Michelangelo?
Your Honor, I'll, I'll volunteer to be, serve on this committee.
Okay. Others have interests? Again, Councilman Felder?
I would have interest in, in this committee, Your Honor, but I would, I would ask the city manager about the schedule because for the prior one, my schedule would be prohibitive for the times proposed.
Okay.
When would be the best time for you?
Evenings and weekends.
Evening before the council.
Which perhaps may not be the best time to stay.
I, I'm, I'm thinking that Councilman Lamore probably would have an interest on the police side, so, but.
Well, I think that we have a couple that have an interest to serve on this one if there's, and I think Councilwoman Germaine was just going to say something as well, but.
If I may follow up, Your Honor, and I think that it might make it easier, as Councilman Lamore and myself have already served on it, on a subcommittee in the recent past.
Yeah.
Along with yourself, I would defer to other council members if, if they wish to step up and.
Good.
I'll go where I need it.
So Councilwoman Germaine says she has an interest as well. So I think what we'll do is the, I'll have the city manager make contact back, talk about some of those schedules, how we can get, obviously the staff person that are there meets all the schedules the best it can be, but I think at least we have a start point. Mr. Pastu, is that good?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution regarding the establishment of a capital improvements millage ad hoc committee.
Motion by Councilman Michelangelo, supported by Councilwoman Whitman on item 2635, the resolution establishing the capital improvements millage ad hoc committee. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Whitman?
Yes.
Mike Guangeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk? The next item is item 2636, authorization to proceed with demolition of fire damaged house 624 East Second Street, and I do have a letter to read into the record regarding this.
Okay, well, we'll start with the letter, please.
And this letter is from Cheryl Eby. To Monroe City Council, I'm sorry I could not attend this meeting, but I would like to explain my circumstances. Seven years ago, I contracted the West Nile virus, which changed my life. I was a small business owner of tranquility massage, massage therapies on Le Pleasant's Road. My business was ready to expand and I contracted this virus from a mosquito. The virus went to my brain and spine and I lost movement in extremities and became confused. I was out of work for three years from that and I'm still fighting it. Facing multiple surgeries, I have been responsible helping my daughter and five grandchildren as well. So after two years of being ill and getting very behind in bills, I dropped my house insurance and my fiance has stepped, has stepped in and helped with a lot, us a lot, but our debt from being ill and helping two other households will not be paid off for another year. This is very unfortunate that my home was burned down. This home, 624 East Second Street, has been in our family for over 70 years. It means a great deal to me. I lost everything. We asked the city for one to two years and they said it would be okay. We needed time to pay off debt, to get a loan, and take the house down. We understand it is dangerous and we do not want anybody to get hurt, but this is the fact of it, this is the fact of it all. We don't know if somebody burned us down or not. We were told by fire departments since we had no insurance, there won't be an investigation. This does not make sense. I will do the best I can to come up with the money to tear the house down, but the city has not done an inspection on the house either and it's nine months later. The city wants proof. Well, I was told by the man we hired, he will call utilities and get certificate of disconnect. I didn't have to do anything. Now nobody did what they were supposed to do and of course, months later, it's all falling on me like I'm not doing anything. My mistake is trusting everyone and what they say verbally and nothing in writing. The contractor was supposed to bring me the contract by today and it has not happened. I'm sorry. Also, I was told I did not have to take care of getting certificate from utility companies, that he would do it, but now tables are turned and the city contractor told me last Thursday I had to do it and have it all today for council meeting. Well, I've called and I of course have no certificate. It needs to be sent out. Nobody expects your house to burn down. This happened at 1:45 a.m., March 8th. Thank God, we heard my cat screech and it woke us up and he saved our lives but killed my animals and rescue. I have an animal rescue because on the east side of Monroe, it's out of control, all the strays. So we get them fixed and try to find homes and release them back. I try my best to be a good, responsible citizen. I'm sorry I was unprepared for another life-changing horror to happen in my life. Sincerely, Cheryl Eby.
So I'll go to Mr. Pastu. Well, yeah, if, if there's any follow-up or information relative to this, I know that we've received, or the staff and others have looked at this and had some communications, but also communications with the residents that's nearby, but also what the security of the facility currently is, the house.
There's nothing more to follow up on, Your Honor. You know, our recommendation is to proceed with the demolition. It's been 10 months and, and candidly, we've, you know, had neighbors concerned and complaining about it and given the mitigating circumstances identified in the letter, we tried to be as understanding and as patient as we could be, but the fact that there was no insurance and it does represent a, a public nuisance and some safety aspect to it, that we would recommend that we go forward with it. You know, we would still probably be four to six weeks out before the demolition would take place in the event that there's an ability on the part of the owner to take the matters into their own hand. We gladly would pull back from it, but currently what we're looking at doing is, you know, it's best to survey any abatement that may go with it, demolition of the home and, and its disposal as well as site restoration. Again, we just, it's been 10 months and, and, you know, again, you know, we're understanding of the circumstances, but it also presents a, a problem to, to, to some of the adjoining neighbors as well. So the request is to allow us to proceed with the demolition for not to exceed amount of $25,000 and, and my word that if, if by chance the property owner is able to secure the means to, to handle the matter on their own, that we would, you know, withdraw the process at that point.
Facility is currently not secure. It's open in the back, if I recall?
That is correct.
Okay. Council, Councilwoman Vining?
Yeah, I had a question. So if we approve this, does the city try to recoup these dollars or does it go on the tax rolls or how does that work?
Well, if I may through the mayor, the process would be as we would proceed with the demolition. And again, keep in mind, all of this would be done in a competitive basis. So the best pricing that you're going to get to do the, the scope of work, you know, we can, you know, secure that from a property owner's standpoint. But we would invoice them once the project's been closed out. If it's not paid, obviously it would, you know, through an action that you would likely take later this spring, go on to the, the May tax bill if it's not paid within the period of time specified. So, but if it's paid, then obviously they've got the property free and clear as well, so.
Your Honor, I have a question for the city manager.
Yes.
It appears from Mrs. Eby's letter that she's been out of work and obviously they've had, she's had a hard time coming up with the money to secure the facility. Do we happen to have any residual funds in our community development block grant that would basically pay for the demolition? So there is, there's not going to be any expense to the property owner if they're, if the income qualified?
We have not explored that possibility, to be honest with you.
We have the fixed program, but this is kind of the opposite of the fixed program.
Yeah.
Just, that's just a question.
Yeah, it's a good question, too.
And that means that way that maybe the city doesn't have to pull out of its general fund the money for the demolition if we can use block grant funds for it.
We can explore that.
Your Honor, I.
One second, please. I think Councilwoman Germaine has some comment, then we'll take a motion.
I would like to ask council if I can abstain from voting on this because this is a relative of mine and I just don't think it's right for me to vote.
No, I don't have a.
That's all right with council?
I have no objection.
I have no objection.
So, so Councilwoman Germaine is asking to abstain from the vote and also the motion, so Clerk will note that and just when you're called, just say abstain.
Thank you.
Councilman Michelangelo?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we authorize the city administration to seek bids for the demolition of 624 East Second Street and that if in the period of time before the execution of the bid that the property owner comes up with the means to stabilize and improve the building, then we give the authorization to city manager to negotiate that.
And you want to also research the opportunity for CBG funds?
Do that independently.
Independent, okay. There's a motion from Councilman Michelangelo.
The attorney's got to say.
Oh, go ahead.
Your Honor, if I may, one comment on, excuse me, Councilman Mike Guangeli's motion. I don't think the property owner's ever said that she would be able to stabilize. It's that she would undertake the demolition herself, just for purposes of our record being clear. I don't think it, based on everything we've known about the property, it's not going to be financially feasible to rehab. It's a matter of her doing the demolition herself.
I'll modify my motion that if she comes up with the funding to do the demolition herself, it'll be up to the discretion of the city manager to make that decision or not.
Councilwoman Whitman?
Support.
So your support continues. Okay, there's a motion by Councilman Michelangelo, supported by Councilwoman Whitman on item 2636, authorization to proceed with the demolition of the fire damaged house at 624 East Second Street, as the motion stated. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Whitman?
Yes.
Mike Guangeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Abstain.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item is item number 2610, resolution to adopt 2020 city council meeting calendar.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we adopt the 2020 city council meeting calendar.
Motion by Councilman Michelangelo, supported by Councilwoman Whitman, I'm sorry, Germaine. I'll get it right because there's.
So I suck me a left.
Okay. I will, I'll start over. There's a motion by Councilman Michelangelo, supported by Councilwoman Vining on item 2610, the resolution to adopt the 2020 city council meeting calendar. My apologies. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Whitman?
Yes.
Mike Guangeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is the consent agenda.
Okay, there's one item. I need a, any discussion or a motion? Yes, Councilwoman Whitman?
Motion that we approve the items on the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilwoman Vining, supported by Councilwoman Whitman to accept the consent agenda, the one item. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Whitman?
Yes.
Mike Guangeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes. So as we come to the close of the meeting, or not quite the close, because we have a closed session as well, but we start with council comments again. Councilwoman Whitman, any comments?
I think I have some, but I can't remember what they were. I am really looking forward to this year. I'm looking forward to, you know, some of the decisions that we have to make. One of the things that I want to be more active on committees, but it's really hard to beat John's history, you know, his knowledge of the history of what's gone, you know. So, you know, I appreciate the other council members and I would like to start working on developing a sense of history for the rest of us so that we know if, if something happens to John and we, you know, the rest of us don't know all of that history, it's hard to make a decision. So I'm really looking forward to digging in deeper and getting more involved and seeing some, you know, continuing with some of the changes that we've already started working on. I'm looking forward to this year, so that's all I have.
Councilman Michelangelo?
Yeah, Your Honor, thank you very much and thank you for the comments, Councilman Whitman. Much appreciated. Just for the communities, we took, we, we had a number of motions. We went through rather quickly. But I think what's important is that, and this gets at the, kind of the fundamentals of the council working together on projects, is that about two years ago, the planning commission had the opportunity to rezone the Lazy Boy property from commercial to light industrial in order to facilitate someone that wanted to buy it for an indoor storage facility. And when it got to council, the council determined that there was a higher and better use for that property. And so we did not agree with the planning commission on that issue. What we did is we went back and looked at our community master plan that had been recently adopted. And the Lazy Boy property was set up as what we refer to as a legacy property. It's one of those properties in town that if it's successfully redeveloped, it's going to improve the quality of life in the community. And we have a number of them. We had Lazy Boy. We have the former IHM Academy as a legacy project or a legacy property, the former Lincoln School, which now has the fire station, the former Christiency School, which the city's in the process of looking for residential development. But we used the community master plan as a guide, worked with the city administration, completed a subarea plan. It really took a look at the opportunities for that property and then lo and behold, are now working with a developer on the redevelopment of that property. In turn, the city, one of the commissions besides the planning commission, planning commission approved now the rezoning for a plan unit development, which we adopted tonight. The Brownfield Authority, which is another commission or authority of the city, has developed the Brownfield plan for that property, which then will allow the developer to capture some of the taxes, to remediate the property, and install the necessary infrastructure. And then to layer on top of that, tonight, we approved the establishment of a corridor improvement authority for the entire North Telegraph Road and South Telegraph Road corridor in the city of Monroe to reinvest money that we get off of these redevelopment projects and put it back into the corridor to make it better, to increase walkability, lighting, landscaping, and make it more of a viable commercial district. So over the last four years and particularly the last two, the. So over the last four years, and particularly the last two, the council has taken a number of strategic steps in order to get where we were tonight. But when we go through the agenda so fast, we make a lot of motions on various plans, and I wanted to be able to tie it all together so you know why we took all the actions this evening that we did. We approved the rezoning for the property, we approved the Brownfield Plan to redevelop the property, and then we also approved a corridor improvement authority to basically carry the corridor for the next 20 or 30 years into the future. So with that, I want to thank the council, the mayor, and the city administrative staff for working as a team in order to complete those objectives. And I wish everybody a happy new year. And I'm looking forward to the next two years because we have an awful lot to accomplish. So thank you very much, your honor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Vining?
So first I had a question, maybe the mayor can answer this or the city manager. When Paula brought up John and his knowledge on the history and other things, that's kind of what I talk about when we talk about balance. Like I consider myself more of like a people person, and I consider John more of like a numbers guy, get down into the nitty gritty of the contracts and everything, and it's a good balance. But in the past, before I was on the council, we had a position called mayor pro temp. And it just made me think when Paula made the statement, what if something happened to John? Well, what if the mayor has to go off somewhere or, you know, anything that happened? And I'm just curious as to why we don't have that position. And, you know, I don't know how you get that position if the council votes or if the mayor appoints or how that goes. But, but John, John would have my vote. I know some people think I just follow behind you like a little puppet. But, I mean, I've learned a lot from the council, and I was just curious about what happened with that position.
Sure. So it's like other appointments, and I think ties a little bit with Councilwoman Whitman talking about other opportunities on boards and commissions, and many opportunities on boards and commissions. So as the, as the charter reads, the mayor makes, recommends, I should say, appointments, and the council approves. That's where the council vote comes in. So the mayor pro temp position is one that's recommended by the mayor and then approved by the council. So it sits to me, and actually, as I was thinking this through as we start this year, I like the consistency that we have the same council, and it's on my item along with other boards and commissions that will come on the next council meeting, not the work session, about appointments. And that's one I'm considering as well to make a recommendation to council.
Your honor, let me just help you out with that decision. As a former mayor.
Yes.
The mayor pro temp position to me is a, kind of like a on-the-job training for someone that wishes a higher, higher place in leadership. So I would decline any, if, if, if I was so selected, I would decline being mayor pro temp, because I think it's more appropriate for some of the younger council to get into that type of a position to see what goes on in terms of the mechanics of local government.
So a little further background on that, I think, as well, I think that that's, that is an appropriate comment is, so the mayor pro temp position is, for whatever reason that, say the mayor's not able to attend the meeting or a function or an activity, the first outreach would be the mayor pro temp. I've kind of taken the approach in the last couple of years or so is, there's opportunities that each council member, I thought, would have the ability to, to attend an activity or community event, or to sit in for the mayor on an administration event. So I've kind of taken that role, or I should say that, that thought. I think in, I don't know, it's 10 years now in this position, starting the next term, there was one meeting I did not attend, and there was a council member that was, at that time point, it was mayor pro temp and ran the meeting. So that is a potential, and that's why I think that through of, of how that should be. So I guess my thought would be, because it is a consideration, I usually have a conversation, what I have in the past, of recommending or requesting somebody to serve as a mayor pro temp. I'll just, I'll just put it out this way, if there's a council member that has an interest, by, as Councilman Michelangelo said, please reach out to me, let me know. I'll be glad to tell you what that is, because we see each other here in the administration, the activities, the council meetings, running meetings, but also the agenda, working with the clerk's office. But there's many other items that is, I believe, that's the community outreach, that is a responsibility of the mayor to be involved in. And if there's others that would, others that have an interest as a mayor pro temp, some of those activities could be attended by that person as well. So that's kind of a opportunity to, example, I know we all got the meeting for interest for Sunday regarding the bicentennial for, here, and presenting a proclamation on the First Presbyterian Church for their 200th year anniversary. I, while I know I will be attending this one, that might be something in the, in the future that I could be out of town, and we want to have that city representation. Sometimes there's others that have been there, and I've asked each of you to present an item. I know the councilwoman have, so that'd be something as a mayor pro temp, your willingness to also take on those activities as kind of a leadership. John, or I'm sorry, Councilwoman Michelangelo?
Yeah, your honor, I just, I kind of, along the same line you're talking about when I was mayor in 2004 and 2005, I had three city council people that had six years of service. So they understood the budget and operation of the city. So what I did is rather than select just one of them, I rotated the mayor pro temp every eight months, there was a new mayor pro temp, so they all would have the opportunity to do what the mayor said, go to ribbon cuttings, go to proclamations, attend on behalf of the mayor, other, other functions, to give everybody, to give them. And they all appreciate it, and they all did a great job. But, but like I said, it, it's, it's, there's responsibility that goes along with it, and, but I think it's, it's a good opportunity for people to learn how local government works at a different level. So I'm interested, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to see the mayor considering the reestablishment of that position.
Councilwoman Vining, if you had another comment?
Yeah, yeah, thanks for that information that cleared up a lot of things I didn't know about the position. But I don't think we'll meet again, so I'm going to invite everyone out. We're going to hold Martin Luther King Jr. brunch at the Oaks Village located at 924 East Second. That'll be on Dr. King Day, which is January 20th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So join us for food, fun, fellowship, as we honor the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Again, that'll be at the Oaks of Righteousness at their hall, we call it the Village, and 924 East Second, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and all are welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Jermaine?
Just want to say that I've learned a lot in the last two years, and I still have more to learn, but I am confident in this council, and I feel a lot of confidence with this team. So I look forward to the next two years. Thank you.
Felder?
Thank you, your honor. I'm very happy to be back. Thank you all for putting you here. Yeah, very much looking forward to the next term. I think that Dr. Whitman makes a very interesting point in terms of subcommittees and working groups. I think a good part of the reason all of us got here is because we're interested in local leadership and improving our communities. If you could have some more.
On roll with that, I think that would be a good thing. I'd certainly appreciate it. Yeah, the other opportunities certainly sound interesting, so we'll have to see what comes in the next two years. Again, I'm very much looking forward to it. Thank you, your honor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Just a few announcements, and I've already mentioned the one about the, the council would have received the email to see if I, please respond back to Pat regarding if you intend to have the opportunity to attend this coming Sunday for the First Presbyterian Church Bicentennial. I think it's one of those opportunities just to be part of the community and recognize their milestone as a church and knowing their history and legacy. The city council work session is reminders next Monday on the 13th regarding the public safety assessment, so that's for council's agenda. We also, if you haven't responded, please do to Ms. Weaver on the city council's goals and objectives. There was, we, the first couple of dates did not work out, so there was a follow-up email sent on December 30th with a couple of dates, please respond, because I think, you know, we, we want to get the goals and objectives, the start draft, just as we did two years ago. I think it really came out with some, at the time, I thought, there's a lot here, and I think it's nice to also review all that was achieved. And, but really, what's the, what's the, kind of the milestones we're looking for in the next two years? Councilman Michelangelo spoke about the agenda and the council action items. I had that on my notes as well, I think he explained it very well. So it may seem to those that are here or those that are watching, how do they go through these motions so fast? How do they even know what it is? And I always say you can go back and look at previous work sessions or council meetings, and there's been much discussed before this. This is not the first time we've had these items before us, some are two and three times over. The staff, I think of these particular items that Councilman mentioned that were on our agenda, were pretty much hour-plus-long work sessions of information to learn that. So we learn as we go as well, and, and so we're well-prepared and have the information as the, as the decisions come forth, how it might seem that goes by quickly. There is a lot of work that's done to get here, and I thank the administration, Mr. Pastu, for keeping us on track on all those as well. Councilwoman Vining, thank you, because we will not meet before Martin Luther King Day, and the opportunity is there. And, you know, yes, it's a holiday, but it's a holiday to really reflect and think about why the holiday is there, why Martin Luther King is, and what his legacy and history was, as we outreach in our community and to others, and activities and events that the councilwoman mentioned, where we know the Community College has activities and events as well. Please watch their website and their calendar for those opportunities to really to share fellowship and to broaden all of our horizons in learning. I just want to say happy new year to all. I look forward to the next two years and the comments by council this evening. And.
Over the.
Yes.
I forgot, there's two things. One is kind of a public announcement. I usually, you're usually pretty good about going through all of them. I know that on January 17th, on Friday, it's a Friday, at, I think it starts at 5:30 at the Community College, the River Raisin Battlefield Foundation is having a wine tasting event as a fundraiser. Okay? So let, and tickets are available, and you can get the tickets at the National Park or by calling the River Raisin Foundation. You can find that information online, but they are having a fundraiser as part of the foundation's commitment to improving the battlefield. And the other thing, I forgot in my notes, your honor, it's for the city manager, for the next work session, if he would be so kind to give us a timeline on the adoption of the new city zoning ordinance, so we can get that in the, in the pipeline.
Through, your honor, if, yeah, we'll put that on there for discussion. The format is different, and community development is kind of finalizing a lot of the text associated with it, but I think it's, it would be good opportunity to look at the new format and present it to council and then run it through the planning commission before we come back for council to consider its adoption, so.
Good. That's all I had, your honor.
Thank you for the reminder of that, Councilman. Clerk Treasure Lavoy?
I just have one thing, applications for the presidential primary are out. If you have any questions or if you think you should have received one and you haven't, you can either go online or you can call our office at 384-9140, and we'll be glad to help you out. And of course, you can register right up through election day. But don't wait. If you want to register to vote, just do it and we'll help you out.
Michelle, when did they go out in the mail?
They actually went out, there was a little bit of a snafu, it's a long story, and I'm sure it'll come up at some point, but the state keeps basically, the state's changed its mind a couple of times on this side of applications. But anyway, they went out at the end of last week. So some people are, some people have already turned them in. So I know they have hit, once again, we're working with the post office, because, you know, from time to time, we have some challenges, but my understanding is those are going to stay in the city of Monroe, so hopefully we won't have too much of a problem having them delivered. But they're out, and call if you don't have one.
Yeah, that's why I wondered. I always get one, and I haven't seen one in the mail.
You were on the list.
I'm on the list.
You're on the list. Yeah. You just got yours? So yeah, give it another day, and if you don't, just shoot me an email.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. That's it.
Mr. Pastu?
Well, your honor, I, just the only comment is, very nice, you know, ceremony with swearing in, certainly appreciate Judge Brown and IHM for, you know, the invocation. It's a great community and certainly enjoy the opportunity to work with the city council again for another two years, and as said many times, there's a lot to be done. And it's great that there is an excellent working relationship with city council members and a great deal of respect for one another, and it's certainly excellent to have a good staff behind me to help with all the work that needs to come forth. So I'm looking forward to the next couple of years for city council, and there's a lot to be done, and great opportunity for our community to continue its growth. Thank you.
With that, as we get toward the end, are there any comments from those present here this evening? Citizens comments time. Just please come to the podium. Name, please, address?
Pamela Gerald, P.O. Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. I drove down here from Oakland County so that I could see Ms. Kelly Vining get sworn in along with her other colleagues. I just wanted to remind you all, last year, when my husband and I came down here, all of you treated us so exceptional, so special, and I was just so happy to see how all of you gelled together. So congratulations on all of you getting reelected. And I like what you're doing in terms of promoting diversity and inclusion into the city, but I wanted to say something special to Ms. Kelly. I met you based on a referral, and I have campaigned, and I've known a lot of elected officials over a 45-year period, but I haven't met too many people that are as community-oriented as you are. I didn't know that you guys go by precincts, because in the city of Southfield, all of our council represents the whole city. In my mom's community, which is the Flint community, they go by wards. So precincts was a new word to me. I guess it's like wards, but, you know, I've spent a lot of time in your ward, and you are a very valuable asset to your ward. It's almost like you're the African-American Siri, because whenever people want something in that community that I've seen, they've called you. And I just really appreciate your compassion for the human spirit, for all of the people in your precinct, and it appears to be a predominantly African-American community, but there are also other races there. I like what you do at the library, and I'm sure that all of you do for your precincts. I just have not spent time there, but I just really applaud you for all that you do and your dedication, and thank you for becoming a good friend to me and my husband. I've learned a lot from you, and I guess my husband and I are going to have to get an apartment in Monroe, because you guys are amazing down here for such a small city. Thank you so much. And Mr. Mayor, you're, you're absolutely incredible. The Juneteenth celebration happened because of you and Mr. Vincent Pastu and the councilwoman, and we're looking forward to another one this year. And I liked all the things that you talked about with me in terms of more greater inclusion and diversity. So thank you, Monroe. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela. Now, there's another comment coming, but, you know, just a follow-up, as, as we do have precincts, and as you stated, but I think it's for Councilwoman Vining and all the council members, because the way our, I have a little uniqueness, while we represent a precinct, we are voted in citywide. So the votes come from every resident in the city, that Councilwoman Vining, as well as the remaining councils, Clerk Treasure, myself. So it's, we have that representation to bring those items of our, from their precincts forward, but collectively, all the community votes for all of the council. So it's kind of a unique item, so just, just different than some other places. Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Other comments, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Troy Goodenough. I'm here this evening to congratulate the mayor, the city clerk, Trevor Treasure, and the council on their reelected positions. But I'm also here to announce that I will be seeking the office of Monroe County Sheriff in the 2020 election.
You can't do that this format. I'm sorry. That's okay. We're past that.
All right.
But I, but since you're here, though, I think it's great, because Councilman Michelangelo had some comments regarding about the police facilities. We may be reaching out to the sheriff or yourself, not will, may, we will, in the
or yourself, not will, may, we will, not administration, just to maybe go over some of that, you obviously have history and legacy that was talked about here, many years of working in the sheriff's department, that you may have familiarity with some of the topics, we talk about the current joint partnership with the police and the county sheriff, delivery services, but I think that we may have some outreach, just to see some, maybe get some answers to the councilman's points.
Absolutely, and I think, if I can, if I'm online.
I'll let you know.
You'd let me know. I believe in building bridges, and I believe teamwork and collaboration to solve whatever, whatever faces us, and that's quite evident here in how city council attacks and deals with issues, and I'm of that same mind, so my apologies.
No, you're good, we'll be reaching out regarding some of that discussion as we move forward on the facility.
All right, thank you.
Good seeing you, Major, thank you. Other comments from those present here this evening? Other comments? Well, I'm going to, just before we make the final motion here to go into a closed session, this is one of more unique meetings for a swearing-in ceremony, which usually go very quickly, but we had some very important items that the councilmen spoke to, the council spoke to, and the hard work over the two years, it really came, is coming to conclusion, and the next steps are there that we're working for. With that, I look forward to a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we go into closed session for the purpose of labor negotiations.
Support? Michelangelo, supported by Councilman Felder. Clerk, please call the roll.
Which conference room are we?
I was going to say that, we cannot meet on the first floor, because they're doing some things, third, third floor.
Third floor, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Whitman?
Yes.
Michelangelo?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Jermaine?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
We're adjourned, not sure when we'll return, but thank you all for being here this evening.